Hello, 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 hello. Welcome to another Get to Know the Candidate. Today is Monday, May 2nd, and I have the great honor to be speaking to Hugo Soto Martinez, who is a candidate for Los Angeles City Council. So get ready, get cozy, as we're going to get to know the candidate and ask him some questions and see why he's running and what is his vision and his platform for Los Angeles. So I'm waiting for him to get in the chat, but I want to also welcome your questions and your comments. Feel free to post those on the chat and I'll bring him in. So let me see if Hugo is here, ready to go. I don't see him yet, but we get him in here pretty soon. How is everybody doing, by the way? We just had, okay, let me see Hugo for the city maybe. I don't see him in here, but he will come. Okay, so hi Hugo, welcome.
Hey Aura, how are you?
I'm good, I'm good. I don't see you on Instagram, but I feel, I figure I'll bring you in here. If you can just go to my livestream on Instagram.
Let me see, let me look for you.
And as everyone is kind of getting cozy in, happy Monday. I hope everybody is having an uplifting, uplifted week in that we are all ready to go. Yes, hi, okay, I see, already hear the feedback, so that's why I know you're in here. Let me see.
All right.
Okay, hello, 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 how you doing?
Wow, this is so technologically advanced.
I feel that too. I feel like everybody that comes to my street is like, wow, this is so cool. One day I have to show the behind the scenes, so people know how crazy it is to actually make this work.
We're in the matrix, people, ladies and gentlemen, we are in the matrix.
And then Monday Matrix, welcome to Get to Know the Candidate. You know, I started this space a few years ago to kind of get candidates that people typically don't get to hear a whole lot, or that are progressive, or that align some with my ideology. Some of them don't even align with my ideology too, but I just like to get to know people and see what they're, you know, what they're up to. And also, this is a great space for my community to also get to know folks that are striving to, you know, to be elected officials and decision makers, so that we can also build a bigger tribe and, you know, and grow together. So thank you so much, I'm welcome.
Yeah, you got to be here, I'm still sort of soaking all the technology.
I know, I know, I know, but first, let's just start by listening to your story, your personal story, and what brought you to this work? So if you can introduce yourself to, you know, to the viewers right now and share with us, you know, who you are.
Yeah, thank you Aura, so I'm a, so you know, I'm a lifelong Angelino. My parents were street vendors in the city my whole life. My dad, you know, had a back injury, left him disabled for life. And then I started working at a, at a non-union hotel. I worked that job through high school and through college. And right when I'm ready to graduate, the union started organizing my workplace. I joined the union fight, we won, we got a contract. And I've been doing this for 16 years now, almost 16 years, it was 16 years in July.
Wow.
I've been across the country to, from, you know, Florida, Georgia, Arizona, doing organizing fights. And then I decided to run because, you know, it's just, we need someone that can build coalitions and really fight, you know, the powerful entities of our city. I don't think we have that enough in the city of Los Angeles. We pander to developers, we don't fight the structures. And I think the city was ready for something, something like this. And so that's a little about myself, I can go a little deeper, but you know, just sort of breezing over.
Yeah, what do you like to do? Do you like dancing? Did you go hiking? Like, did you have a thought? Tell us a little more other details about Hugo Soto Martinez's.
Sure, so I, I like, my favorite pastime is concerts, I love concerts. I like to dance, but you know, I'm not very good at dancing, but I do like to dance. I love cumbias, I love salsa, merengue, you know, all the normal, the normal stuff. You know, the normal stuff you should like, if you don't like that stuff, something's wrong with you.
That's a problem, I know, yeah.
That's right, I like biking, I know you can see the bike in the back. I like hiking, I hike about two, three times a week.
Yeah.
I like to read, I'm kind of, I'm secretly a nerd, I read all kinds of books about random things. And I'm a movement person, I'm a labor organizer, sure, sure.
Yeah, 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 totally. It's funny what you say there, like, well, you like dancing, but you don't know, because that's when people, like, I always say like, "Do you play an instrument?", to my friends, and they're like, "Yeah", and I'm like, "Oh, we should sing one day", and they're like, "Oh, do you sing?", and I'm like, "Well, yeah, I sing, I don't know if you would like my singing, but I still sing." You know, so it's one of those things that you have to do these things for yourself, you know, and not for others.
Absolutely.
But okay, so I feel like you touched in a piece about, you know, being, being your personal story and, and you know, what kind of brought you to this work? And I see a pretty, in the past, maybe four or five years, I have seen a very progressive wave coming in, weave into the political process of Los Angeles. But in the reason, in this election cycle, I'm feeling a very strong, you know, more conservative. You know, we see it kind of in the candidates that we have for mayor. And, and how sad, we don't, I feel like we don't have a really strong pool of like candidates. It just feels very polarizing. And I'm wondering if you can, if this is something that you have also felt, and it has something that has inspired you also to run for office? So maybe tell us a little bit about why you're running and how is this wave of this both kind of like being progressive and being more, you know, conservative in the second largest city in the country in Los Angeles has ignited, you know, this idea for you to run for office?
Sure, sure. So you know, so I've been, I've been a union organizer for, you know, for over 16 years now, and I've seen it evolve a little bit. But you know, we have to sort of look at it in a, I look at it in a historical context, right? It's like, what started the organizing here in Los Angeles, the modern, the modern era, right? It was, and it was labor unions, right? That was in the late 80s, that's what started a lot of the movement. And so imminent Prop 187 came around, it was a huge momentum, and then folks became, ERCA passed in the late 80s, and folks started to have the ability to vote and use electoral process. And you know, those are a few unions and organizations like Chirlia and Caresen were a big part of that. And so that created a wave, that created a wave of progress. That's when, you know, someone like Gil Serillo was elected, and you know, those folks sort of came in. And then, and then now, in the most recent history, we saw sort of, you know, Bernie Sanders created like this young and the climate activists, which you've been a part of, you know, sort of started emerging a little bit. And we've now are at a point where I think those two worlds are sort of conjoined, right? I think they can join and have a progress. But you know, I see this as a, as a continuum of organizing. And so, you know, and I always say like, the things that we fight for is reflective of the power that we build. And so I think we're at a point right now where we're not, we're no longer demanding, you know, one issue candidates. We're actually demanding everything, right? We're saying, yes, we want to have union rights, but we also have to have housing, we also have to live in a, in a world that we can breathe and live, you know, save, you know, you know, stop the climate crisis. All these things are sort of emerging, and so it's bringing in, you know, folks that normally have not been part of the political process, but it's because we actually have the ability to win these seats.
Yeah.
Right? And I think Nithya Raman was like the, the big sort of example, is that she was, she was just an organizer in the community, and she was able to beat incumbent. And so it shows the strength of the movement at the grassroots level is growing. And that's one of the things that, that made me want to run. I was like, you know what, like, we could actually do something that's very progressive and very bold. And so we talked about a lot of different, we talked to all the groups I organize with, and we decided to do it. And I do say "we" because it wasn't a personal decision, you know, and so, and so, and I think we're at a moment. And I can break this down a little more, because it's like, I got a lot of stuff that I read a lot about the 1960s, and how we talked about, you know, it wasn't about desegregating lunch counters anymore, but it was like fighting for good jobs and housing. And that's the only, you can only do that by passing policy, and that's government, right? That's government passing policy that is reflective of our values. So I think we're at the point in Los Angeles, I'm very inspired right now.
Absolutely, and I think you, you touching a, an extremely, extremely important point, which is we are at a turning point of intersectionality. You know, that where we know that, for example, in the environmental movement, the people that are going to build the new infrastructure, the new renewable energy revolution that we are about to see, have to get a good paying job, have to have a secure contract, have to be local. Hopefully are people that are, that have experience or their back and reentry, or that maybe they are living in a, in a community, of an environmental community of, you know, with pollution and really burdening climate change, the struggles of climate change. So we know that all these things are happening, and it's so good to see the new generation of people running for office, talking about these issues in an intersectional way. Housing, where do we build the housing? How much does it cost? So that we don't have to go and live in the desert, or, I mean, so many people, Lancaster, you know, the places in the inland empire. And actually, that's causing a huge other issue, which is you're driving your car over here, you're emitting all that CO2, isn't that the problem to begin with? So I mean, we can talk more about this, but I'm eager to dive in deeper with you about your issues and, and you know, and like, and your platform. But first, I want to ask you, because I'm, I'm always, I use this platform to educate other people about what are the roles and the responsibilities of a city council member, and how have you seen that impacting your life? People don't know sometimes that we're in the middle of elections and that we also, the city councils do certain things. So if you can maybe share with my audience, you know, what are some of the things that city council members do in Los Angeles?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you know, one thing that's, that's very different about Los Angeles is that we have what's called a weak mayor system, right? In places like Houston, or Chicago, or New York, the mayor plays a huge executive role, right? They sometimes control 100% over the budget. And some cities, they have control over the school board, right? In, in, in Los Angeles, that doesn't exist. The school board's a separate entity, the mayor can only propose the budget, cannot implement it, has to go through city council. And planning and land use, and what happens in a district is almost exclusively to the council member. And so we have what sometimes people refer to as a mini mayor system. So we have like 15 mini mayors. And so, you know, when I'm door knocking with folks, right, to put it in simple terms, I say, "You see that building right there that just got built, you know, that's unaffordable? Your council member decided that."
Yeah.
That was that person, right? "Do you see why we don't have pedestrian or bike infrastructure? That's your city council member, right? The way we interact with the homeless community of this district, that's your council member. You don't have a tree canopy, and you have a, you know, you know, the temperature here is hotter than in other parts of the city. That's, that's your council member. Stop signs, speed bumps, that's your council member, right? And so they have tremendous oversight over what happens within their district. And I think it's, it's, it's the things that affect people more on, on the day-to-day basis. It's like literally how you interact with the city is almost exclusively, you know, done by the council member that you elect. And so when folks start to hear about that, especially on the issue of housing, because we know that, you know, rents are going through the roof, and it's very unaffordable to live in the city. I think people have a very direct and, you know, agitate, they get very agitated, right? When they hear these facts. So yeah, the council member does a ton, ton in the city of Los Angeles.
Yeah, absolutely. The other piece that the city council members do that I like to remind people is that they get placed in committees. So there's different committees, guys, there are committees that deal with our energy parks, environment, environmental justice, there are committees that deal with housing and homelessness, there are committees that deal with just the money of Los Angeles, you know. And, and the president of the city council is such an important role, is almost as powerful as the mayor, I will, I will probably say. Because in this case, we have a woman, her name is Nori Martinez, she represents the valley. And she gets the power to say, "Well, I'm gonna place this person in this committee, or that person in that committee", and that is a lot of politico maneuvering, as I like to call it. And, and it's also a, a huge way to perpetuate a culture at City Hall that has in the recent years been, you know, shown to be corrupt, to have a system where everybody thinks the same, so there's no real discourse of discussion of like healthy discussion. I feel that's healthy to me sometimes when you have arguments with people. It can be good, especially if it's in a, in a, in a place where you can actually learn and grow, you know? You can actually learn a lot, you know, and, and do a lot of good, good stuff. But yeah, maybe we can talk a little bit about like this culture, because this is the same culture that you're dealing with right now, running for office. You're running against an incumbent that is very powerful, that has been there for how long? You please tell us. And, and that is doing the bare minimum, because he's already kind of sitting in the throne, and he doesn't really have to try so hard to listen to other folks, or to listen to the folks in his community, or even do what his community wants. And I think it's super important, I've been talking about this culture at City Hall and in politics, because it's perpetuating a lot of issues, sexism, racism, lots of others, a lot of, a lot of other stuff. So tell us a little bit about like, who's the competition? And, and set up this stage to also tell us why you're running.
Sure, yeah, so I'm running against a council member, his name is Mitchell Farrell. You know, he's been working in City Hall for almost 20 years now. He was a staffer for Eric Garcetti, you know, a lot of folks don't know that. And he's been a council member for now for nine and a half years. And so in over, over 40% of his donations come from the real estate industry, I think about 43%. This district has gone through massive gentrification, this district has lost 12,000 people, you know, and I've worked in this district for 15 years, it's no secret to me, it's, it's, it's black and brown folks being pushed out, being priced out. You know, we have not prioritized the environment, we have literally hundreds of uncapped wells in District 13, Echo Parks, viewing, you know, toxic fumes every single day, that hasn't happened. There's no, we have a, you know, we have beautiful mobility plan that can sustain about eight or nine miles of protected bike lanes, we have, we have zero, zero feet of protected bike lanes. And so, you know, this is, this is a deeply entrenched, you know, elected official who is just simply not representing, I think, the working people of the city. And so anybody who's, who's been in this district, it's very evident that it's, it's not working for folks. It's not a, and by the way, this is the most progressive district in the city of Los Angeles. Traditionally, right? And yet he is, I think, probably the second or third most conservative member. He votes more, he's more aligned with Joe Buscano and John Lee. And so, and so, you know, it just shows that he's really out of step with, with his district.
Yeah, 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 so why are you running? Why, why getting, you know, as a former candidate of City Council? People ask me this question, and sometimes now I want to say, "Because I'm crazy", you know, because it's such a, it's such a, it's wonderful, and it's heartbreaking, and it's so much work. It's just so many pieces about running for city council, so why are you running?
Yeah, you know, I decided to run after, I came back from Georgia, you know, we were all sent to, you know, at the behest of Stacey Abrams, who I went, I led a field office in Georgia, and we won Raphael Warnock and John Asav. And I came back here, and then Echo Park Lake happened, right? And for those folks that don't know, in the city, right, there was a huge encampment in one of the parks, spent over $2 million, they brought in hundreds of police officers, you know, national news, right? And so to me, it was like, you know, I go around the country, you know, trying to change the world, and we do so much for our members, and it's, you know, union organizing is hard, it's very, it's very fulfilling work. You change, you know, people's lives are changed. But I found myself, the elements, those, those corporate divisive hateful elements that we fight so hard, were here, in our backyard, right? In our, in this district. And so it was really the straw that broke the camel's back. And as, and as much as we do in the union, yes, it's true, people have good wages, they get healthcare, they have a pension, they have job security, but you know, the union cannot build housing. That's not something we could do, right? We can't, the union, it's very hard to pass citywide policy, it's very hard to, you know, put in modes of transportation that we know we need, and we need to move away from our vehicles, the union can't do that. And so I found myself, is that the, the things we were fighting were so urgent and so massive that it required doing more than just organizing in the union. And so, and that's going to require for, for just normal folks, right? Like you and I to like take more leadership, to take more positions of power, and do it for the right reasons, right? Not for the, sort of the backwards policies that have been passed for, for many, many years. And so I just, I see this as a continuum of the movement, it's like, you got to keep expanding and growing and keep pushing.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And in the, in the growing on the movement, I see that you have cultivated an incredible group of volunteers. It's an exciting campaign, an organization that I'm very involved with have endorsed you, DSA LA. A lot of friends really have so much hope for your, for your campaign, because they see your platform reflect on your own values, so what affects you directly. And you as an organizer, and I know that people move out of their own self-interest. What matters to them is what moves them. So definitely, you're saying something that is motivating people to act and to participate. So tell us, what are some of those things that you are really willing to champion? And yes, we talked about intersectionality, so there are 100 issues to figure out in Los Angeles, don't get me wrong. But what are, what are like your key three, five policies or, or issues that you want to move forward when you get to be an elected official and a city council member?
Yeah, absolutely, so the, you know, obviously number one is the homelessness. We can't, we can't ignore that, because it touches on so many things, right? You know, over 600,000 people in the, in LA County spend 90% of their income on rent, you know. And so these are, these are, that's, that's, you know, over 75% of the city is rent burdened.
It's crazy, yeah.
And so, and so that touches on a lot of things, that touches on just the lack of affordable housing in the city, it lacks, you know, lack of good jobs, not having enough mental health, or drug addiction services for the community, you know. So those, those are, that touches a lot of things, you know, the police, the police budget is one that is very much active conversation right now. You know, I, I studied criminology and political science at, you know, at UC Irvine, and so I know that, you know, the way you, the way you prevent crime, right, is by giving communities resources, right, jobs, and, you know, attention to medical, and those things, right? That prevents crime, that's not about.
Dealing with the root cause, yes.
Exactly, exactly, dealing with the root causes, and you know, so that's a discussion we want to, we want to champion. And of course, you know, growing the labor movement, you know, I can't, I can't shy away from that. I do see the labor movement as, as that being one of the, one of the largest vehicles for systemic change, right? When, when, when my mom became a union member, SEIU, USWW, which she's a proud member of, right? That union did more for my family than the government ever did, right? We had, she was able to have one job, she was able to have health insurance, she had stability, she could, she could be home and pay attention to the kids, right? Union, unionization, I think, is extremely important, and we need to have leaders in City Hall, they're going to champion that, right? Not shy away from taking on big corporations. And so those are all the, you know, it's probably more than five, but those are all the things that... Of course, immigration and criminal justice reform, right? I've worked in immigration for a long time. We have a justice fund here that is just not representing immigrants in the correct way. You know, I fought for, I've been fighting for DACA and TPS in my union for a long time, and, and taking on the sheriff, right? Sheriff Villanueva, his deputies murdered one of our members' sons, Andres Guadalupe, right? He was, he was a friend, he was the son of my friend Cristobal, and so we got to make sure that there's accountability, and we, we have oversight over those, over those sort of leaders, right? And so there's, there's a lot, there's a lot to do, but you know, we're trying, we're going to try to do our best. And if we build the right movement, and we build the right base, we'll be able to do all the things that we're trying to achieve.
Yeah, of course. And I want to ask you maybe to dive a little deeper on, on the environment, sustainability, resiliency, because I was so disheartened by reading this article in the LA Times about my rural candidates not even having the environment listed on their websites. And I mean, we have climate change, it's here, you know, and the climate emergency. So what are some of the sustainability practices that you can, that you're planning to like bring into your campaign? So that, you know, you can also have those good jobs, get people work, you know, and all of the things that we can do when we, you know, when we talk about sustainability, climate change, the climate emergency?
Sure, so you know, in this subject, we have to be, I'm very mindful that everyone's going to play their role, right? The federal government's going to play a role, the state's going to play a role, and then the city's going to play their role. And so city council members can push for a lot of things. I think one thing that we need to be pushing for more is, is the retrofitting of old buildings, the electrification of old buildings. I think that's very popular, something that I fought for with United Local 11 and the Hollywood Community Plan. I think making other modes of transportation more viable, so we move people away from their automobiles, that's a lot that the city council can do, as I mentioned, you know, putting in protected bike lanes, you know, fixing and making pedestrian infrastructure and bus infrastructure more viable for working people, putting more tree canopy, building more, you know, creating a robust tree canopy system, water collection, water collection systems. Those are just a few things that I know city council could do. I mean, you're the expert on this, so I'm sure I'm like touching the tip of the iceberg, right? And I got to learn more on this, you know, it's not, it's not my expertise, but I know those are the things that I've, that people have taught me, right? These are the things that city council could do. But those are, those are all within the purview of, of city council.
Yeah, absolutely, and somebody's asking here on Instagram, "Would you support a ban on natural gas infrastructure and new developments in LA?" And I think that this goes under the purview of electrification. So I think that that's what this person is asking.
Yes, I mean, absolutely, you know, we have to be mindful of how, you know, the, the, the Green New Deal is also, there's a just transition, right? So we have to be mindful that there's a lot of jobs that will be affected. And so, you know, we, we have to bring labor into that, and make sure that, you know, whoever is doing that work is going to find another sort of, you know, the way to inject in the new economy. But, but yes, absolutely, it's the right thing, we have to stop burning fossil fuels, we know that. But let's, we got to work with all our partners to make sure that, that not a single worker is left behind, which I think is a very powerful thing, that the environmental movement has now brought in, right? I think that's, that's, that's what makes it very powerful, and it's, we're thinking about workers.
Yeah, we have, you know, there's something called the Blue-Green Alliance, where, you know, but, but what's interesting is that traditionally, it's electrical workers who participate with like the environmentalists, because that's like the most like clear, you know, transition. But there's so many others, like for example, I spoke to David Huerta many years ago, who you know also. He called me to say, "You know Aura, we want to talk to you, because our workers, you know, they generators, they clean", you know, "and, and we want to transition to something a little less harmful for them, because they're also recognizing that the chemicals and stuff that they're using are very harmful for their health." But, but the problem is that now, the new products that are more natural and more friendly to the environment and to their health, they don't clean as well, so they have to do it. I'm like, "Oh crap, we would never, we can never win with these things", you know? And, but you know, but those are like the other places where we can kind of find intersectionality, you know, construction, like, are we, are we, and at the state level that are bills right now that are asking for materials, where we build our homes that are more sustainable, and that, even the way that we build our homes, is it face this way, or is it face south, or what is it? So there's so many, you know, there's so many, many, many ways, and I'm just glad that right now, we're getting, we're at a turning point where people are really start taking this issue more seriously, and understanding that it's not just the trees and the pandas and the wells in the ocean, and the dolphins, but it's actually us, like I have a gas stove, I'm a renter, and my gas stove right now is emitting gases, I'm not using it, and is emitting methane, is emitting gases that is making me sick, you know? And a lot of our communities, you know, Latinx, and low income, that live in homes that are multi-generational, that don't have a lot, and a lot of them live together with family members, with other friends, and they have to live under these conditions, and they also deserve a clean, clean air and a clean environment for themselves. So that's what I'm going to say for now about, you know, the stoves and stuff. And there's so many other ways, you know, in terms of our water. Another point that I want people to understand is the role of DWP, you know, and the Department of You know, and the Department of Water and Power being the largest public utility in the country where City Council, everything that DWP does needs to be approved by the City Council. And I can tell you as a former commissioner that I went to City Council members to ask for help for certain things that I wanted to do at, at, at DWP. Because they try to bring a very isolating culture. You are, you're not to talk to this person and not that, eh, and, and I get that sometimes that has value, but I value so much more collaboration in kind of coming to solutions together. And, and is, it, it was, it was extremely difficult for me to be a progressive, young, the younger commissioner, the youngest in the history of DWP, the first immigrant to be appointed. And, and to feel like I was just really holding on for my life out there, you know, trying my best to do, you know, good things for, for our planet and for our city. So I hope that you become an ally to whoever, you know, and, and also that you become an advocate for good people to be put, appointed as commissioners, which I think is, you know, number one. So, I don't know if you have any comments about DWP at this point. Bring them.
No, no, absolutely. Look, and I think, uh, you know, we're endorsed by the United Steelworkers, which are refinery workers, right? But we're also endorsed by Sunrise and the San Jose Leaves Conservation Voters. And so, you know, we've been very upfront about bringing, bringing this alliance to fruition, right? Uh, i- it's, it's required. It's, it's, we need to. Right? And so, uh, you know, hopefully, and, and look, and this are the, the skills I've learned as a, as a union organizer. Right? We have housekeepers, you know, our immigrants, and we have folks who, you know, wanna be actors and actresses, you know, in Hollywood. And they all work in the hotel industry. We bring folks together and we find a common, common mutual interest, right? And so, uh, we have a, a, a large coalition supporting the campaign, but it's like, we're gonna lead with our values and we're gonna get things done. Make sure not, no workers left behind, you know, and save our planet. Uh, but it's gonna be a lot, it's not gonna be easy, but you know, this is part of the job. I, I kind of enjoy it. I, I like the heated discussions. You know, as long as, you know, as long as you do it, you're not doing it maliciously and there's trust, uh, you know, it, it actually strengthens the relationship. It doesn't, it doesn't fracture it.
I, I agree, I agree as well. I think that when you have a good container to have good discourse and, and even argument and like, you know, like confrontation, like this is what's going on. I think it's, it's really, it's, it's really great. It's, and, and when you have two, two people or two parties or two bodies, you know, that can kind of hold that, you know, in a civil man, in a civil manner, is, it can be really, it can be transformative. I, I have here elected officials say, oh, you know, this person confronted me and I changed the view and I'm now voting this other way. So, public participation is also so, you know, so important. So you have been in the campaign trail now for how long?
Oh my God, it's been, it'll be a year next year. It's been a long time. It's been a long time. Yeah, we declared last June, uh, June twenty, but you know, there was a little bit of work before that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, publicly, publicly about ten months now, yeah.
Awesome, awesome. And so what are some of the most challenging things for you to be a candidate? If you can maybe share some anecdotes. So what, what are the hard parts? Like, be, be frank about how hard it is to run for City Council.
Yeah. You know, you know, the, the one thing is, is, uh, public office was not created for working people. You know, it's just, um, it, it's, it's, I don't see how people can do it. I, I mean, look, luckily, I, you know, I've been working in the union for fifteen years, but, you know, I saved, I have a little bit of savings, you know, we don't make a lot of money in the union. But my entire life savings is gonna be used for this campaign because you can't work campaign, you know, it's, and so it's like, and that's fine. I'll do it and I'll be fine. You know, but how is a housekeeper, dishwasher, uh, 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 you know, a room attendant, a student? Impossible. It's impossible. There's, there's no way. Like, the, the, these, these offices were created for people who are connected to power or the wealthy. That's it. Uh, and so that's been very shocking to, to, to realize how difficult it is on. Uh, and, and you know, and, and another thing is you gotta be very mature about it. You know, I've had people who I've worked with, you know, who did not endorse the campaign, right? And, uh,
That's so heartbreaking.
Yeah, it's heartbreaking, but you know, you move on. You know, it's okay. It's okay. You know, it's okay. You don't, you know, but it, it shows, um, level of maturity, right? You can't hold grudges. You, you're gonna have to work with them afterwards and, you know, keep building and building the movement. These are movement folks, right? And so, uh, it's definitely tested, uh, you know, that patience and that, you know, leading with love, I always say, right? But.
Yeah. People used to say to me before I ran for office, when they would come to me and say like, you should run for office one day, but just know that that's when you're really gonna know who your friends are. And it's true. And, and so many people come that you never met in your life and they become like so strong about you and it's just so inspiring to, to see that. But I definitely saw a lot of people mentors that were, went completely dark and, and, and quiet, you know, for my campaign and it's so sad and so heartbreaking, but you know, like you said, you have to be a professional about it. And then, and everybody tells you, it's politics. But you know, I also want to give you permission, literally, to feel heartbroken about it. Because it's, it is heartbreaking, you know, it is heartbreaking to see your friends not taking a stand for you or not showing up the way that you want them to. And then also just bring a lot of compassion for people because like, I have so many of my friends, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I grew up being like in the arts. You know, I was, I was in my home. I was very, very encouraged to be highly academic. You know, performing highly and also performing highly in my art, you know, so I grew up like dancing and performing and going on auditions and singing and like, you know, all these things. And, and I have so many artist friends and some of them were like, Aura, we love you, but we can't do the politics. And it was just so sad, you know, but, but for me to bring like the compassion to like, well, you can't make people do what you want either. You know, it's like a, it's like an interesting balance, but.
Yes, that's right. So when are you, when are you gonna show us some of your dance moves? I mean.
Oh my God, I have some videos online. I should throw a little salsa party for you fundraising. That would be fun.
Oh, that's funny. That's funny.
We should totally do that. But, okay, but you know, it, it, there are so many hard, you know, moments about running and so many, I don't know. I, I lost so much weight. I walked so much and I just slept so little. I was like, literally like tested all my physical and mental and spiritual, you know, kind of resilience. But there's so many fun parts about running for office and beautiful parts. So maybe you have a few anecdotes that you can tell us about.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, the, the, the most inspiring thing is, is, um, is door knocking. Uh, and I've door knocked a bunch for different campaigns, but you know, I go and I'm like, and, and people are shocked that a candidate, you know, is, is, is talking to them. It's, it's like listening to them. It's like asking them, you know, you know, how, you know, that they care about their issues. And, and, and every, and I get that at least once every time, every day I go do our door knock. Somebody's like, oh, you're actually here. Like, and I'm like, absolutely. And maybe because, you know, your vote matters. Your, your involvement matters, right? And sometimes these are folks that, I had this one gentleman who was sixty years old, never voted his whole life. And he said, you know what? I've lived in here for thirty years. Nobody's ever door knocked my house. And we had a conversation about housing. And he said, you know what? I'm just blown away that you would do this. He's like, maps, I'm gonna vote. I'm gonna vote for you, you know, and just, those sort of stories are, you know, they happen daily, every single time. It's very inspiring to, to move people into, into action and to do something. It's just, it warms my heart every single time.
Yeah, I know. That, that part is also like, mine is my favorite too. I remember one time I went to this home Filipino family in the corner. And it was literally like an urban kind of refuge. It had palm trees and like, I mean, this thing was like a forest in like a corner in my neighborhood, you know, and, and the parents were Republicans. And the daughter was a, a Democrat. So I went knocking, you know, and, 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 first of all, I was all about that garden, by the way. So, the first thing I was like, oh my God, tienes tomates and plants. I'm all into it. And, um, and I asked for the lady and she said, oh, that's my daughter and she's not here. But she was so into like the garden with me that she was like, let me show you the garden in the back.
Oh, wow. A secret garden.
And now I'm with the lady and I'm like, but I'm so, you know, you have the PVI, which is the program that we use to kind of like identify voters. And I'm like, it's so weird that I don't find your name on my list. I told the lady and she now called her husband. I heard TT, like her auntie and like, everybody's like in the backyard with me now, you know, like showing me the fruits and the vegetables. And, and I go like, that's so weird. And none of, are you guys registered to vote? They're like, yeah, we're like Republicans. And I was like, why are you guys Republicans? And she goes, say, well, you know, we like Ronald Reagan. And I was like, but he's dead. It's twenty twenty. I said to this lady, it's twenty twenty. It's time for change. We took pictures and they were like, we're gonna vote for you. We're so excited. They put a poster of my picture of her in their garden and like at the door. So you know, you just never know who you're going to like meet out there. And I, I just have so many like fun stories like.
Yeah, yeah, no, it, it really, it really is, you know, it's, it's, and people, you know, people, they could be, you know, I, they could be registered Republican, but they have, you know, working class beliefs, right? They're just, they're angry. So, uh, yeah, I've, way, good for you for turning them, turning those.
I know. So they're like, that happened too long. He's already dead. Let it go. Just redo it. Think about it again. And she laugh a whole lot with me and, you know, they, they were very sweet. But those are some of the anecdotes that I have for my, you know, for my days running for office. So how can someone, um, you know, get together or, or like follow you or, or come up to your campaign? I see some folks are asking about, you know, if, if City Council member, I mean, we kind of already went through a lot of the questions that people are asking. Uh, yeah, people are asking about, eh, City Councils, what they do. Some other people are asking here, with the Pro Act seemingly stalled or dead, are there any ideas legislation at the local level to support more union organizing?
Yeah, I, I mean, it's a great question. Um, you know, there are, there is some legislation that is state. Uh, that's as local as you're gonna get for, for union organizing because that's usually the United Farm Workers are trying to pass the legislation to make it easier for them to vote, uh, in elections. Um, uh, but you know, I would say, uh, union, uh, the way to grow the union is, is union, it's worker militancy. Uh, there's no substitution to that. I think what the Starbucks workers are doing, the sex workers are doing in North Hollywood, that's inspiring. That's the best way to do it. Um, that inspires people to fight and join, uh, the union movement more than any legislation. Uh, and so if you're in a workplace, uh, you know, uh, there's a, there's, there's, that's the way to start. It's like, uh, bringing back old. That's right. Bringing back old school.
Get your own folks to organize. All right. So back to it. How do you, how do one get to support you and what are the ways that people can support you?
Absolutely. So folks, you know, our website is, uh, it's my name, right? Uh, Ugo twenty twenty-two dot com. Our, uh, well, if you're on Instagram, it's, it's Ugo for CD thirteen, same for Twitter. Uh, we're, we're doing canvas shifts. We're door knocking almost every day now. Uh, you know, we have about thirty-nine days till Election Day. Uh, we're doing phone banking. We have a community, we have a team for literally everything part of the campaign. And if you have more money than time, then obviously you can make a donation. If you have more time than money, then, you know, come out here and door knock.
If you don't, those twenty dollars that you're spending on the two coffees a week because, you know, make your coffee at home and donate it to Hugo. Okay, friends? We all have friends and, and sometimes we're not maybe the person that earns the most. But we have friends that maybe are a little more well off and we gotta call them and say like, hey, do you know Hugo? Yaya le dieron su platica. Like, okay, donate, donate, you know? Our networks are so powerful. So just share it around and, and, and see who can also, um, you know, donate. The small donations are so important because they help sustain the campaign. And they also, uh, you know, show that we're not just like about the corporations and, 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 you know, like a special interest, but, but actually that regular everyday people are with us and are supporting us.
That's right. That's right. That's right. Thank you.
For the money.
That's a, that's a good pitch.
Get those twenty-five dollars in the chat right now, people. All right. Anything else that you wanna leave us with?
No, I would just wanna say, well, thank you for, for having us on. And you know, you've done a lot for the community and the climate movement and uh, this is a good example of, of labor and climate coming together. I mean, obviously, obviously, we know we're, we're more diverse than there was one issue, but uh, certainly your, your passion is environment. My passion is labor and just happy to be on.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay, everybody, just get your, eh, credit cards ready. Your debit cards ready. And I posted here on the chat how you can learn more about Ugo, eh, también en el otro chat, the Facebook and the Inst, and everywhere you guys have information. Join the movement, guys. It's so exciting. Get involved. It's, it's actually so exciting. If you have never done it and you're like, I don't know, that's not my vibe. It is actually your vibe. Try it. Just go and volunteer. Go door knocking, make phone calls. Maybe that's not your thing. Maybe you, you make videos. Go ahead and, and, and you know, follow the campaign and make videos. And that's what makes running for office so exciting, that people can bring their talents. And we get to, you know, all of us, eh, you know, as a movement, enjoy them. So, I wanna thank you so much for being today with us and spending forty-five minutes. I know that is so hard when you're running for office. You're like, God, you know? So I appreciate that you're taking the time to speak with my community. And I hope that I, I have asked you some interesting questions that everyone that is watching can share this video so that we can get you more support and can get you to the finish line. And maybe next time we will have you on, you'll be a City Council member and then we'll keep talking about more topics.
Gracias, Aura. You'll be, you'll be, you'll be, you'll be holding me accountable when that happens.
Right. I'll be like, wait, can we talk about this other practice?
That's right. That's right. That's right.
All right. You have an amazing day and, um, and stay, um, we'll stay tuned for more. Elections are in June. Ballots are dropping this week, no? At the end of this week?
Uh, next week, people should start receiving their ballots. Yeah.
If you're not registered to vote, por favor, get registered to vote right now. You can still participate. You know, and if you're not down with writing the, the ballot because you know that it's some sort of mystical thing or, or that you just don't believe that it might get lost or nobody might count it. It's okay. You can also go in person and there is plenty of ways to vote. But just, the most important thing is get registered to vote. Vote for good people. Call your boyfriends, your ex-wives. Everybody needs to be, you know, ready to vote and also to support eh, Hugo. All right, Hugo, we'll talk to you very soon.
Bye, Aura.
Okay, bye. All right, everyone. That was Hugo. And I appreciate all of you tuning in. Uh, and stay tuned for more. Eh, get to know the candidate this week and next week. And as always, please, please, please don't forget to get involved. Thank you so much and we'll talk very, bye.